Welcome to, on our call to order, the February eighteenth, twenty twenty in the name of Stillwater Planning Commission. Let me briefly go over and explain the format of tonight's meeting. It will be a process ending call for items on agenda. The commission will hear from the staff report first, then open the public hearing, and hear for those in favor, or in opposition, or neutral. You will have a five-minute limit on your comments, unless at the beginning of your presentation you ask for it, and the entire commission approves that. When you come to the podium, please could state your name and address for the record. After all of your parties have spoken, the program will be closed. We'll hear closing remarks in alternation to staff. First item, item two A, is Simply Green Coops. Specific use permit, SGP nineteen dash thirty-three, requesting view and approval of specific use permit to establish a medical marijuana growth facility, properly addressed as two thousand East AJ Avenue in the light industrial district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ryan Harkins, Peter Ellen. This is a growth facility that originally came on the agenda on January seventh, and was referred to this date and time. We'll after additional discussion regarding developments in areas close to this proximity. The hatched area along RJ is the proposed site. RJ is currently a private street. You can see Jardale, as well as Brook, and other streets. The red line on this graphic is the corporate boundary. This aerial provides a view of the proposed building. This is looking west across Jardale. And this is the proposed site plan. They're looking at utilizing a bay within a building within the current development. There are two buildings on the side right now. It is currently zoned by an industrial, which allows for grow facilities with an SGP. With that, staff is going to yield the podium to the applicant or their agent for additional comments and presentation.
Hello, my name is Ralph Estrada.
Hello, my name is Roberto Estrada, who's also Oklahoma, with Simply Green Coops.
Do you want to say anything, or? So my question is, this is a growth facility. You're going to be growing these plants indoors. Is that correct, Samuel?
That is correct.
So you're going to have a system indoors that have lights, and you will not be having any growth or any plants outside, except to transport them?
That is correct. Everything will be indoors, nothing outdoors, that location.
Okay. Any other questions for that?
Can you generally tell us about the security of your facility? Will there be cameras? Will it be locked by the end when there's no staff around? Can you tell us how that is?
Yes, currently, we have a camera system around all the units there, alarm system as well. If we need to add more security with time, then we might need to. As of now, we have just those two items, security cameras and alarm system.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Let me officially open up the public hearing. Is anybody here to speak in favor of this particular item? You've already spoken in favor, so you don't have to speak. Is anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this particular item? Seeing none, is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition, or neutral for this particular item? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition or neutral to this particular item? Yes, ma'am, come up here and give your name, address, and...
Kathy Houston, eleven oh seven North Skyline Street. I have a concern. I support medical marijuana. My best friend in Illinois, I lived two more years with stomach cancer because of pot pills that enabled her to eat. We are just over the one-thousand-foot legal limit from the junior high here. And anybody who watches Oklahoma City news knows the problems that happen around dispensaries, with people being followed home even. So cameras don't help that. Maybe catching the people, yes, but I don't know. And then robbed. I mean, why does this have to be? I want this to be somewhere. But why does it have to be so close to our junior high and our grade school? That's all. I want it to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Officially close the public hearing. Staff, you want to come up?
Okay, so staff has developed in the staff report the following findings. Number one, state statutes allow for medical marijuana facilities. This is a grow facility. Grow facilities under state statutes do not have the thousand-foot separation requirement that dispensaries do. And because of their land development code, indoor grow operations have to be in a light or general industrial zoning. It's part of the reason for locations like this being allowed with a specific use permit. They do have a current license to operate a grow facility. They also have sufficient working for the intended use. Having said that, the alternatives that you have available to you at this time are to one, accept the findings as presented, and recommend approval to the city council. You can find the request as not appropriate and recommend denial. If you feel there's additional information or discussion that should happen with this item, you can have the option to table it to a particular date, sir. That, staff will answer any questions you might have.
Any question? Commission discussion? Anyone want to make a motion, or?
I move that we accept findings and recommend city council approve the proposed SGP as presented.
Motion passes five to zero. Item two B, RSR Oklahoma City North LLC Craftson Town Self-Select Poultry Plant, requesting review and approval of the poultry plant created one hundred and eighty-two residential lots and four outlots, properly currently addressed as nineteen ninety-eight West Thirty-second Avenue, and is currently zoned residential, single-family, and agriculture.
Good evening. This is a preliminary plat that originally came to you on December seventeenth. It was delayed through the holidays to address, one, various issues between this and other potential developments nearby, two, to address staff comments, and three, just because of the holidays and schedules of everyone involved. So it is now before you for full consideration. We have opened the public hearing on other occasions to undertake comments. This is a preliminary plat at Thirty-second and Western. The area proposed for the development is in this location here. It actually stretches over toward the creek that you see. The bulk of developable lots being proposed, however, in the hatch pattern basically from Thirty-second to the half-mile mark here. You can see here the overall area being proposed for development. This is looking north, along Western from the south. This is the proposed plat. They propose one hundred and eighty-two single-family lots and four outlots. This is the creek here. It is in floodway. They propose making the floodway area one outlaw, one calon area. The detention pond here is another. You can see the lots having access to Western and Thirty-second. Hence, two access points. They're proposing a third access point to the north to an additional proposed development that has been submitted to the city. We're just going through the internal review process right now. We can continue later. That, staff is going to step aside and yield the podium.
I have one question, sir, before that.
Yes.
Under permission you provided to all commissioners, you have eight items that the developer says recommend additional approval based upon those eight items. Are those eight items still valid, that you're still recommending additional approval?
They are. They are. There are changes that staff in the last review see that need to be made. Some of them are minor, just minor changes or additions. It's fifteen for the twenty-foot easement, tableling easements. The biggest one, the developer and their agent, their engineer can address tonight, dealing with sanitary sewer connections. They've given us confirmation that they have worked at that out. This is the property owner to the north, and the proposed development to the north. They can explain that further, but they are basically going to take their sanitary sewer and run it to the north to a low station that will connect to development to the north, and then out to ground and water. Most of these are things that can be done easily on their part, we feel from staff, but we feel it's important that they be addressed.
Thank you.
Any other questions staff can answer?
The representative from the engineer, annual developer?
Good evening, Brad Regan, Craftson Town, three-hundred-point Parkway Boulevard, UConn, Oklahoma. Here on behalf of the applicant. Given particular questions I'd have to answer those, I can talk on the sanitary sewer if you want, since that was brought up.
I personally do not need for your toxic centers to own and know that you, it'll work.
Yeah, so the issue is there's a current, you know, preliminary plat with a, so we had to get with their layout, but we're in agreement with SMC, their engineer. They've turned in their plan, and we're in agreement to work with them to get the sewer worked.
So the eight items that the community development staff has recommended that we approve this condition on these items, do you have any comment or objections to any of those eight items?
No, we do not. We're in agreement.
Okay. Any questions of any commissioners, or? Thank you very much. Let me officially open the public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this particular item? Seeing no one, is there anyone that would like to speak against this item, or neutral towards this item? Not seeing one, I will close the public hearing. Staff, you will come up and make your recommendation?
So in the staff report, as well as on the screen, you can see the following findings. The preliminary plat meets subdivisions or requirements with those eight exceptions listed in the staff report. Code requires subdivisions. Over thirty lots are required to provide two access points. They're proposing two exterior access points, and then wanting to connect to proposed development to the north. Right now, the proposed development would have, while it's zoned single-family, it's a recommendation in the comp plan for high density and low density, but currently use this land as residential and agricultural. This development is in alignment with the density requirements of the RSS subunit district, however. With that said, you can approve the preliminary plat and accept these findings as presented. You can find the request as not appropriate, recommend denial. You can find that it can be approved with conditions, stipulate those conditions, and then the item will be brought back to you for reconsideration per city code. Or you can table the item to a certain date if additional information is needed.
Any other questions, staff? Commission discussion or motion?
I move that we accept the findings and approve the preliminary plat as presented with the recommended revisions as listed by the community development staff.
The eight items that are in our package?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Let's look. Motion passes five to zero. Item two C, Tobosh Cannabis Company, specific use permit, requesting review and approval to establish a grow and processing facility at one-one-nine-eight East Airport Road in the industrial, general industrial.
Okay, so this is the second of the SGP's on tonight's agenda, to grow facility and the processing facility proposed on East Airport Road. Area in the hatch pattern that you see on the screen is the location of the proposed development. It is near Marine and Airport, so as you can see, to the east of Perkins. This is an aerial view of the layout of the lot. Question, you can see the building that exists now that's being proposed for the grow and processing facility. You can see an under area for parking, as well as existing security fence or perimeter fence. This is the layout that they're looking at on their site plan, again, utilizing the existing buildings. They have adequate parking, not only next to the building, but farther out in the lot. So they would have plenty of your lawn sites here. The building expansion would be used as well as cattle park, and learning up learning requirements. This is a view of the facility from the street. With that, staff, unless you have any questions for staff, who will you yield the floor for the agents, the applicant, or the applicant himself to answer your questions?
Any questions, staff?
Good evening, Commissioner Stephen Goos, Goos and Associates, one-one-three East Eight, here on behalf of the applicant. Ryan covered it to address some of the questions from the previous ones, security and operations. All operations will be in the building. There will be no outside growing or processing. And there's those perimeter fences and the standard security system that they'll have and add to if necessary. If there's any question, other questions?
My fellow commissioner pointed out that I mispronounced the name of your facility, and I apologize for that.
It's okay. It's not my facility.
Your representative?
Yes, I am.
Any que, any other questions, staff?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this particular item? Seeing none, is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition, or neutral for this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Staff, you'll make your alternatives?
Certainly. I would be happy to. So currently, as with the previous SGP tonight, state law allows for medical marijuana facilities, provided they have a license, which they do. Land development code in this zoning district allows indoor grow facilities, provided they have an SGP. Just to demonstrate the difference, under the land development code, outdoor grow facilities are only allowed in exiling districts. Indoor grow facilities are only allowed in our industrial zoning districts. We also see, as you can see on the graphics, there's adequate parking on site, as well as plenty of room to handle any expansion. With that said, the alternatives available to you are to accept the findings and recommend approval as presented. You can find the request as not appropriate and recommend denial, or you can table the item to a particular date later if you feel additional information or discussion is needed. Any questions of staff that we can answer?
Any questions, staff? Seeing none, do we have discussion or motion?
I move that we accept the findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented.
Motion passes five to zero. Item two D, CHC management, preliminary plat, requesting review and approval to create a new residential subdivision named Skyline, Section Two, consisting of one hundred and thirteen residential lots and two outlots on property addressed as one-seven-ninety-eight North Pain. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So at this time, this item again came to you on January seventh, and was deferred to February fourth, and then to this week, to allow for additional discussion. The hatched area is the proposed development. The area inside the yellow is generally the area in question or the subject property. You can see Sunrise to the south, Jardale, as well as Skyline and Crailer. Crailer being the area on the north side of the junior high campus. Skyline Elementary is to the east, just off of this area. This is the proposed plat, as it's been presented and reviewed by staff. They propose, at the present time, access along Pain being extended in, War being extended in, amidst current stub, as well as Crailer being extended in on the north end of the proposed development, as well as an internal circulation system of streets inside of us. They also propose two outlots, one on the northeast and one on the southeast, where the drainage. Part of the issues up to this point have dealt with traffic, as far as traffic volume, traffic flow, generation of traffic, additional traffic in this area due to the presence of traffic issues already with the school site to the west, as well as the density. The applicant has provided a traffic impact analysis, even though it would typically only be required at the final class stage. That has recommended no additional improvements, and showed that the access points were adequate. There was additional discussion and desire for communication regarding, between the neighborhood, the schools, and city staff. I can tell you, we've had that meeting. We discussed issues relating to concerns about the school site itself, and throughout all of the different times. What the school is looking at doing is adding a access drive sometime in the next two to five years along the west side of the junior high building, between that and the athletic field. There was discussion about street width being adequate on Sunrise, for example, as well as the number of access points. Some of the issues and potential solutions that were discussed were closing more and making that a pedestrian and access easement, so that will limit automobile traffic there. The other, another option that was proposed was closing Pain and not having that access for vehicles, but only being a drainage utility and access easement as well. That would mean traffic would have Crailer, and if Pain was enclosed, that Pain would be the second. The neighborhood and their representatives still feel Jardale, supported their previous planning commission meetings and public hearings, still feel Jardale is an access that is needed. Their response and follow-up letter to staff from that meeting, on your packet, with their reasons why. One of the things staff has additionally heard out of this, these discussions, is that it isn't compatible based on density. Staff's response is, this proposed development meets the density as allowed in the RSS subunit district. It's also, we feel compatible with comprehensive plan based on following. One, the future land use elements, specifically the future land use map. Two, the two A, two B, six A, six D, and eight J, dealing with not only housing, but also traffic, and compatibility, as well as connectivity. With that said, staff will stand for any questions before we yield to the applicant and their agent for presentation.
You made a statement that the traffic study shows that the connections to the residential streets are adequate. What in the traffic study leads you to that conclusion?
That was their conclusion in their recommendations. They felt no additional connections besides the three proposed or needed. They actually were in the, the meeting, it'll be a conference call, with staff, school district, and residents. They walked through why they felt their recommendations weren't justified. We also talked in that about why that has been the school district, as far as that site, has had problems, and what the neighbors have experienced as far as pedestrians and traffic issues. And the neighbors were very gracious in sharing, from their perspective on the ground, what they see. Part of that discussion that came out was, there hasn't been a lot of discussion with neighbors, residents in those subdivisions, and staff in the past about those traffic concerns, the traffic lines, or the street conditions. So that was one of the ongoing things that hopefully out of this process, we can begin working together. But that is the recommendation of the traffic study and the traffic engineer.
Thank you.
There are other recommendations, I would say, to help more with internal long-soul site itself. Other questions, staff can answer?
Any other questions, staff, this time?
Thank you.
Good evening, again, Stephen Goos, Goos and Associates, one-one-three East Eight, here on behalf of the applicant. Again, requesting approval of the preliminary plat for a twenty-seven-acre, one hundred and thirty-two-lot, single-family subdivision, tabled from the previous two meetings for various reasons. Tonight, to address the traffic, Esther Shaw Smith with Lee Engineering is here to prepare the traffic study, so all of her addressed those items. There were a couple of items I just wanted to address. Ryan touched on them a little bit, that the density specifically. Last time, there was some, some confusion on the density. The density as defined in our code is the amount or quantity of something per unit of measure, the number of units in a given land area or building area. Gross density, which is what applies in this with regard to a comprehensive plan. And zoning is, gross density is units per acre density measurement that includes in the calculation all land occupied by use, right-of-way or easement, recreational activity, civic activity, building, parking, landscaping, and any other improvement necessary for the development. So in the context of this request, you know, we're at four-point-six, four-point-eight units an acre. The comp plan calls for twenty units an acre or less. The zoning calls for eight units or less. The other items I have, we can address later, depending on the public hearing, but we'll get Esther up here to talk about the traffic, how they did, what they did, and what their findings mean from that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Esther Shaw Smith, engine agent, Lee Engineering, five-twenty-five Central Park Drive of Oklahoma City. I just wanted to go through an overview of the traffic study. I know you've seen it in your packets. We did confirm the data collection sites with the city vehicle conference call, and this number eighteen, so they're fully aware of the areas that we perform our data collection. We performed peak hour, AM, and PM, turning movement counts, and twenty-four hour counts on your arterial major and minor arteries. The major intersections were also performed data collection at those major intersections and arterial roadways, because those are critical to your traffic flow and mobility within the community. They provide fewer access points and higher speeds and volumes. So those are your critical areas that you need to keep traffic flowing. Local streets are not included in data collection, simply because these are inherently low speeds and low volumes, and this is where you have your most access. You have your driveways, your trash cans, your sidewalks, everything like that is inside of these local roadway streets, and this are, that's just the industry standard of basic access management versus mobility in your communities. Based on the preliminary plat, the development's supposed to include one hundred and thirty-two residential lots, you guys already know that. Based on those... Based on those trip generation rates from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the ITE, which has a trip generation handbook that all traffic engineers follow, that equates to ninety-nine total trips in the AM. That would be twenty-five into the development, seventy-four out of the development in the AM peak hour. For the PM peak hour, it's going to be one hundred and thirty-three total trips generated. That's eighty-four into the development and forty-nine out. The AM and PM peak hours are typically from seven fifteen to eight fifteen in the morning for a development like this, and also in the evening would be from four to five PM. That AM peak hour, as you probably know, does coincide with Skyline Elementary by about fifteen minutes, so they have a start time of eight o'clock. The PM does not coincide with either the Stillwater Junior High or Skyline Elementary, since they release the elementary at two fifty, and then the junior high ends at three fifty. So we don't have overlapping PM peak hours, we have about fifteen minutes in the AM. The estimated trips, so we take those trips and we distribute them on the roadway network, and we distribute them based on how existing traffic is coming and leaving the current development map. So that leaves around forty percent that's going to the north and to the west, or fifty-five percent to the north and the west, forty percent going south into the west, and then five percent going east or using Jardoe. But it's really, most of the city is kind of west of this development. Operational analysis of this study area intersections and roadway was performed, and it was found that traffic generated by Skyline is not significant enough to have a large impact on your arterial or major collector streets, and they all operate at levels of services to your better still. And the access points that were proposed by the developer were adequate. I should mention, though, that the extension of Grand View was used in this analysis as it will be installed prior to build-out of this development, and that was indicated by...
So you assumed in your traffic study that a street that has not been built yet is connected?
Correct, sir.
So what, what rationale or what evidence do you have that that street will be connected, and at what time?
I was directed by city staff during our meetings that that would be something that would be happening, and the applicant said they would start within the next few months on that extension. Because we look at future roadway conditions when we look at the future condition analysis, and so we have to say, if there's our, if there are planned developments or planned roadway improvements, we need to incorporate that into this study. We did observe operations at Skyline Elementary and at the Stillwater Junior High to observe the queuing and stacking. It did last for around ten to fifteen minutes. We did notice that pedestrians and students have infrastructure on their school grounds with sidewalks, signage, school zone flashers. There's a four-way stop sign at Skyline and Sunrise, they have high-visibility crosswalks, and we did observe students using proper paths to the blocks, and then major safety issues were observed with those students crossing or with them mobilizing through the neighborhood. Most of the students traveled north or to the west after they left the school site. And I know that you do have a few items from, from the neighborhood that I just, you know, wanted to point out, and they did have a capacity issue on Sunrise, and where they had mentioned that that roadway just can't handle any more cars. According to its roadway classification, and I would call it a local road really, but it's five thousand vehicles per day is the capacity of that roadway. Right now, it has less than fifteen hundred vehicles a day. I know that you had a neighbor, Mr. Go, he did Go accounts, Sunrise and Jardoe. We also counted that location, and his counts are very consistent with our counts. He had two hundred and ninety-two total vehicles entering and exiting Sunrise during two hours in the AM, and we actually had a hundred and forty-five in one hour. So it was really, I mean, they correlate to the same number of cars that the, that the neighborhood's state has seen versus what's in the report. And then, I think, to address kind of that foot traffic issue from this onset, we did acknowledge the pedestrians, we did count the, that the study area intersections around the school. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have at this time or after the public hearing.
Any other questions at this time? Mr. Goos, could you come back up here? I got a couple of questions from you. The Grand View connection...
Yes, sir.
It's, it's included in the study...
Yes.
Do you, at the last meeting, I asked a question which hopefully you have some sort of response to, in terms of, when will that be implemented, and what, can we count on that, what do we have to count on?
Those plans have been reviewed and approved by city staff as part of work happening in East Ridge's second edition with, to create and build out the lots on the north side of Swim and on the west side of Grand View. Part of why Grand View hasn't got built prior to this is various property owners on the west and the east could never get on the same page to get the right-of-way and who's building the road lined up. Our client on that, who's also partner in this, has acquired the right-of-way from the property owner to the east. That deed has been sent to the city, last I heard, it was in the city attorney's office, signed and notarized by the property owner on the east side of Grand View. So it just needs to be accepted by city council as a right-of-way. The plans are, like I said, have been reviewed and approved by city staff. So that road is really close to getting ready to be built. It's not conceptual, it's approved plans and a right-of-way for these...
So let me follow the series of questions, and then you can respond the way you want to respond, is, is it okay that we approve this development contingent upon Grand View being in place before the final plot comes back to this commission?
We're, we're fine with that condition. I mean, our, our intent is for that road to be built prior to a house being occupied in Skyline East.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. Anything else?
Any other question? Yes. Who did you say was financially contributing to buying easements so that Grand View could be a through street?
It was dedicated. There was no money exchanged for the dedication of that east half of the right-of-way.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will officially open up the public hearing. We have eight people signed up to speak. I will have these eight people speak and then open it up to other people, for or against this. And I want to apologize upfront that I'm an engineer and I'm good in the English language or pronouncing things, so I definitely will mess up your names. Simon Ringsmith.
Handouts for each of you, the last page has been rotated a hundred and eighty degrees, so it's kind of upside down the way you're looking at it. I also need to get my PowerPoint pulled up here. Thank you to city staff for getting this loaded, I appreciate it, and I would like to request additional time. I promise to use this time wisely and efficiently and not waste anyone's time here tonight.
So the time, based upon your notes, eight minutes.
That's, that's what I asked.
And without objection from other commissioners, we will pull out extra time to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the planning commission. The key points I'm going to focus on tonight are density, traffic, and safety, and I'd like to start with this quote from the Stillwater Comprehensive Plan. State said development should be designed to promote street patterns that provide maximum safety and mobility for all modes of transportation while preserving neighborhood integrity. Skyline East, as currently plotted, meets city code, but it doesn't fulfill the mandate set forth by the comprehensive plan. As currently plotted, Skyline East is not the right development for this location, and I'd like to demonstrate why tonight. Skyline East will be right here when it's finished and include one hundred and thirty-two houses. As the developers pointed out, this density is similar to East Ridge, which is a quarter mile to the west, to the, to the west. But what about the neighborhood where Skyline East is being built? You would have to expand your search all the way out here to find one hundred and thirty-two houses. I know I've counted them. Skyline East is twenty-seven acres, about four point eight hour spread, but the neighborhood it sits in is far different. To find one hundred and thirty-two houses, you would need an area that comprises one hundred and six acres, or a gross density of one point two four houses per acre. That means that Skyline East is almost four times as dense as the surrounding neighborhood. If housing developments are to be done to preserve neighborhood integrity, this is not the way to do it. But from the beginning, my chief concerns have been traffic and safety, and this is where we run into some key issues. On this map, the red markers indicate locations where the traffic study was conducted. This can be found on pages six, seven, and eight of the traffic study. I've also highlighted Skyline Elementary and the junior high. The results of the traffic study indicate that Skyline East would not have a major impact on artery roads. This is on page eighteen twenty-seven. But the issue at hand is not artery roads. Dr. Moore stated in the January seventh meeting that Skyline Elementary is a neighborhood school, which means more children walk to school, and more of the traffic comes to these schools from inside the area bounded by Lakeview, Jardoe, and McElroy. Given the intersections where the traffic study was conducted, it means that there was simply no data collected on parents taking children to and from school within the neighborhood. Further, the traffic study did not gather data on the impact of Skyline East on neighborhood streets, nor were pedestrian counts, and I'm talking actual data, you used to look at the number of schoolchildren who crossed these streets. The three most important streets here are Sunrise, Skyline, and Crayler, since Skyline East residents will have to use those to get to artery roads. The developers offered to close out more, which is a start, but it's frankly not enough. That would leave Sunrise and Crayler. So let's take a look at Sunrise and Crayler. First, Sunrise, it's twenty feet, one inch wide. We know because we measured it. It's twenty percent narrower than all the surrounding neighborhood streets, many of which are twenty-five feet wide. This means that east-west traffic is dangerously close to each other, and you can go to Sunrise today and see the tire tracks in the grass where vehicles continually drive off the road. On this slide, you can see a situation that's fairly typical of school pickup and drop-off times. There's not enough room for this school bus and this truck to pass each other safely. You'll notice that the truck is driving off the road, and nearly all the residents on the north side of the street have had to replace their mailbox, and several of them here tonight, and they'll attest to that, because their mailboxes get hit. Skyline East traffic would make this situation a whole lot worse, not just for people driving on these streets, but for residents of Skyline East trying to get in and out. Here's what it looks like when a bus drives down the road. Notice while maintaining a safe distance from mailboxes and trashcans, the bus takes up over half of the road. There's no room for another car to pass without driving off the side. Next, I'd like to address Crayler. Traffic from Skyline East would exit here and go west to Benjamin or Grand View when it's finished, and we were told by the developer, this is actually the primary access point for Skyline East. However, this is Crayler during hours of peak operation. You can see it's clogged with all kinds of traffic, including vehicles just parked on the road. You can also see students walking across Skyline. The developers offered solutions such as a crosswalk or signs, but that's like using a Band-Aid to fix a broken arm. These students are going to cross where they see an opening, and Superintendent Moore stated on January seventh, he expects Skyline East would add thirty to thirty-five additional students, and that all of them are going to cross just like this. They're not going to go down and wait for a crosswalk. These are the conditions that schoolchildren cross in and will cross in, even worse when Skyline East is built. Here you can see literally, vehicles literally parked side by side on Crayler. Remember, this, you're looking at the main access point to Skyline East right here. It's right where that yellow bus is parked, blocking all lanes of traffic with more cars nice to it. Finally, this is Skyline Street. We're looking north here, this is Skyline coming southbound during pickup and drop-off. That four-way stop sign is right next to me when I took this picture, and these cars are backed up for almost a quarter of a mile. That makes Skyline East access extremely problematic, and these situations were not measured by the traffic study. The traffic impact study found that artery roads in the five main intersections from the neighborhood were, were equipped to handle traffic from Skyline East, but the traffic study did not measure pedestrian traffic going in and out of schools, nor did it look at the width of Sunrise Street, nor did it investigate drop-off at the junior high and elementary school. What they did do is offer this suggestion, the schools should consider drop-off and pickup procedures that maximize vehicle storage on-site to limit spillback on adjacent roadways. This is page twenty-six of the traffic study. School administrators have been working hard to do exactly this for years, but it's just not this simple. The junior high is hoping to address this, address busing issues with a bond measure that's going to be voted on twenty twenty-three, but there's, that's years down the road, and there's no guarantee the voters will approve it. But I want to address something. You could say that these photos are edge case scenarios. You could say that the pictures I'm showing here are only one part of the picture, since these streets are relatively quiet most of the day outside peak hours. Ladies and gentlemen, I submit to you that most streets in any neighborhood are relatively quiet most times of the day. When you build any system, whether it's planning a street, wiring a room, or installing a sewer line, you build it to handle load during times of peak operation, especially city streets. Stillwater spent years rebuilding intersections like Six and Perkins, not to handle traffic at ten AM or nine PM, but during peak operational hours. We've rebuilt intact intersections and entire streets here in town just to handle football game traffic, and that's only six or seven days a year. All we're asking from Skyline East is one section of road, one hundred yards long, to get traffic away from school zones like this and onto Jardoe. Here's how Skyline East is currently planted with no Jardoe access, and here's what it would look like with Jardoe access. Cut off access to Sunrise and Moore, build that hundred-yard stretch of road, and you now have a housing development that guides traffic right to an artery away from school zones. I still contend that the density is much too high and not the right fit for the neighborhood, but if that can't be changed, then at least give those people access to Jardoe without going through school zones. Before I close, I want to address two other quick points. First, there have been concerns raised about adding Jardoe access because it would create another point of conflict by adding an access point on an artery, and that could lead to more intersection, or more accidents. This concern makes sense in normal situations, but we're not talking about, we're talking here about adding access points specifically to guide traffic away from a school zone, which is not only reasonable but prudent. Currently, there are ten intersections on Jardoe between Six and McElroy, it's just one mile stretch of road. One of them, Duke Avenue, was added just a few years ago to address traffic concerns. Between McElroy and Lakeview, there's only three. Adding a fourth for Skyline East puts it far below the normal amount for artery roads in Stillwater, and would make access to Skyline East easier and safer. Additionally, the Grand View extension that we've been talking about tonight would create an access point on an artery road. If it can work there, it can work for Skyline East. Finally, the last point I want to address is what our neighborhoods can look like in the coming years after East Ridge Two is developed. Here's how things look now with eastbound traffic going to, with eastbound traffic going, going on Crayler through a neighborhood of Benjamin, and then north to Lakeview. During peak hours, Benjamin is backed up, just like the skyline slide you saw earlier. This spot of land here, the red spot, is zoned for planned urban development. It's going to get developed, many, it's going to get houses, many by the same developers you in Skyline East. And here's what it's going to look like after the new East Ridge Two development is in place. Once Grand View is extended, we've heard of Grand View as the solution to a lot of problems. Once Grand View is extended, homes are built on that parcel of land, all the traffic from Skyline East using Crayler to get to Lakeview is going to have to go through that new neighborhood to get to Lakeview. It's literally going to take the problematic situation on Benjamin that we already have and not solve it, but move it a quarter mile to the east. The same problem that we currently have is going to still be there, because there's going to be a new neighborhood developed that will have houses in it with traffic that we'll need to contend with. Yes, the Grand View extension will help in the short term, and the developers have stated they're not going to let park in our Grand View, which will also help, but in the long term, we'll be right back to where we started, and then it's going to be impossible to add an extension from Skyline East to Jardoe, even if the city did want to. My bottom line here is that many of these issues could be solved if Skyline East removed access to Moore and Sunrise and put a road to Jardoe. It's a hundred-yard stretch of pavement that would solve a host of problems now, prevent all sorts of issues in the future, and make the neighborhood safer for schoolchildren. Either that, or I hope the developers seriously considers reducing the housing density of Skyline East to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. Commissioners, thank you so much for your time, and thank you to all parties involved for your work on this. Thank you very much.
Bob? Please, please, Joe, for clapping. Bob Gromman?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Bob Gromman. I'm speaking tonight, first to represent the Stillwater Board of Education, Dr. Morrison.
Can you give me your address?
Twenty-two, twenty-four Sunset. 2224 Sunset Drive. Sorry. Dr. Moore says his regrets, he's training for, at a conference in Atlanta, and asked me to come do the honors for him, and since I have one month left in my five-year school board term, I thought I could do at least one favor, right? So here I am. And I appreciate the opportunity. I've been fascinated by this whole topic ever since I started attending the first, first meetings and the first discussions, and tonight, I'm going to try as best I can to represent the Stillwater Board of Education and the Stillwater Public School System in my role as president, but I also have been interested in the discussions for other reasons too, as I'll try to explain at the end of my comments. I have very few details to offer that Superintendent Moore hasn't already presented, thanks to his familiarity with the schools and the expertise of teachers and administrators. He has spent many hours examining the facts and proposals, as well as engaging his staff, including the extremely able director of our Transportation Division, who is well-known for his expertise. The schools, as always, will adjust to whatever the situation dictates, while hoping the best decisions are made for an efficient and safe school environment inside and outside the building. Buildings, in this case. We think we have proven ourselves capable of that, not only in the location and under discussion, but in the area for where the current middle school and same original elementary are in close proximity, in much the same way that the junior high and Skyline are. These are challenging topics that create a lot of confusion among the public about who's responsible for what. And it's rather obvious to point out, and while new school measures may alter and somewhat improve the situation, more can only be done with the assistance of city planners, such as you. Schools can't do everything, is something repeated often in educational circles these days, and with good reason. And I'm struck by the notion that somehow they're wishful thinking, that the school they're going to provide a road that will ease the congestion. Well, I don't know how up you are on school bonds, but that is not part of our responsibility. And we will adjust as much as we can to the areas that we're responsible for, but otherwise, it's impossible for us to make commitments to that. So as Dr. Moore has stated, we look at the realities of population to plan for the future. In this case, with the changing configurations, a possible result of a future bond, shifts in demographics, and potential growth of Stillwater, we are confident of our ability to adjust, such as the way of educators. Your teachers and administrators will find a way, I'm sure. We are not, however, unaware of the potential complications and even hazards of the current proposal. I have, each of the meetings I have attended eventually addresses seriously the potential bottlenecks in traffic flow and resulting risk for those who drive, bike, walk to either the junior high or Skyline, and the need for further and efficient approaches and departures from the schools is well-known. After driving the area myself, I asked others, including the principals and teachers, what they thought of the decision facing you tonight. The response was, and this is kind of the overall summary of what I heard, "Okay, but the obvious channeling of more cars into the immediate areas, area with no change in heat risk can help that create problems that concern me." I don't need to repeat what I'm calling the Jardoe solution, along with other measures such as new traffic lights in strategic areas, improved sidewalks, perhaps one-way streets for certain times of the day, or even a reduction in density per number of dwellings in the area under discussion, all of which could make a big difference in how this project feels, is embraced. But I had not even heard the phrase, "The Grandview Extension," until, until tonight. I'll have to, I'll have to run that over in my brain and see what I think of it. So much for what the schools see and hope for based on best evidence. Now I'm going to switch roles just a minute, because in addition to my board duties, I'm also a veteran of the campaign to create the Westwood Neighborhood Association, which, in our humble opinion, for many years, has maintained policies to reduce conflicts that could have quickly doomed that neighborhood otherwise. I can tell you with complete candor that without the efforts of many individuals and the cooperation of city government, the beautiful new school on Sixth Street would likely have been constructed somewhere else, and a top 100 national school would have been moved away from the rundown area it was fast becoming at one time, more than a decade ago. The reason that it worked is the simplest of all democratic principles, that when growth and tradition come face to face, each side must give something in order to get something. I believe that's what's at stake here, and I hope you and the rest of city government can oversee a solution where development and prosperity, not bad things necessarily, are carried out with regard to the equally important issues of tradition, comfort, and safety for all citizens, especially in our town of Stillwater, that prizes its reputation for educational excellence and comfortable residential life. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anthony Shore?
My name is Anthony Shore. I live in 2001 East London Avenue. I heard the traffic study submitted in support of this proposal, and would like to make some remarks on that. Traffic study says a site's accessibility is affected by the geographical location involved with respect to other activities. The most notable other activity in this area is, of course, the schools, and I think we caught that today. Of 133 pages of report, I may have 320 words address the activity of the schools in this area. Of these 320 words, 43 of these words are voted to, and schools may should consider drop-off and pickup procedures that maximize vehicle storage on-site. Skyline Elementary School does have drop-off and pickup on-site, and yet they still have queuing in the adjacent streets. Even if the junior high improves its vehicle queuing, the amount of pedestrian and bicycle traffic is unlikely to change. The purpose of school crossings is to protect children walking and bicycling to and from school. The traffic study does not mention the school crossing at McElroy at Skyline, does not mention the school crossing at Skyline and Sunrise, and does not mention the school zone at Skyline and Sunrise. Indeed, one-third of the votes to protect additional traffic will pass through the school zone intersection past Skyline and Sunrise, and yet the study mentions nothing about that. Now, I heard today they said they observed this, they observed the area. That's not in the report. None of the permissions in the report, if not there for analysis. So the traffic patterns generated by proposed plat, as designed, will not improve the safety of the children using these school zones. Article 12 of the Planning and Zoning Self-Commissioned Regulations of the City of Stillwater states, "The city of Stillwater shall have full power to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare by regulating use of property and by controlling and directing the development of the city." That's your job, that's what been entrusted here. I believe that the proposed development plat does not promote the public health and safety of the residents of the city of Stillwater, and I urge you to reject it. Thank you.
Leslie Meyer? Leslie Meyer?
Hello, my name is Leslie Meyer. I live in 1102 North Payne Street. In the original comprehensive plan commissioned by the city of Stillwater, low-density residential was defined as all single-family and two-family residential uses that involve a gross density of four dwelling units or less per acre. In the C3 plan adopted in 2013 and currently in effect, the definition of low-density residential was changed to conventional single-family detached dwellings, two-family units, and low-density multifamily with a gross density up to 20 minutes per acre. Wow, that is quite a change over time. Keep in mind that many of the neighborhoods in our area were in existence for years or even decades before the first comprehensive plan was adopted in 2001. The current definition for low-density might work for newly developed areas of town, but not for infill development in long-existing neighborhoods. Current homeowners are unable to protect their investments, the quality of life and property values can be eroded without recourse. In my opinion, this is not progress. The original comprehensive plan states, contains these statements. "It is the intent of this plan to ensure development standards that conserve and enhance existing development, and a key component to this plan is enhancing and maintaining the viability of existing neighborhoods. I believe that infill development must be compatible with the surrounding area. Who better understands what is compatible than the existing residents in the area? Perhaps changing the definition of low-density was a mistake without setting limits on how much the density can be increased relative to the adjacent neighborhoods. Also, there seems to be no guidelines in the C3 plan to protect our school zones from unmanageable increases in traffic. These issues are exactly what have brought us to this point. To go forward with this plan as proposed would be the second mistake. When my sisters and I were growing up, my parents used to tell us that two wrongs don't make a right. Maybe some of you all have heard that before. That is where we are coming from as existing residents of this area of town. Introduction of Skyline East into this neighborhood will change the quality of life for existing residents. The added traffic from 132 homes will have a negative effect on the school zone and neighborhood if it perceives as currently platted. Developers trying to solve a problem by providing workforce housing within walking distance of the schools. In this case, the solution to one problem will substantially aggravate a problem that already exists at current traffic levels. This is not just an neighborhood issue. Parents from all over Stillwater are already dealing with this. It will only increase over time as Stillwater grows. Sunrise may not be at capacity now, but if it becomes that way in the future, it will be too late to introduce a pressure relief valve for the Skyline East traffic in the form of a dedicated exit to Jardoe. During the two to three years of construction, all equipment will be coming in and out through the school zone, even with Grandview completed. Direct access to Jardoe solves this problem completely. It also solves the traffic problem at peak times. Residents and emergency vehicles would have access to Skyline East and would not be competing with or adding to the traffic in the school zone. This would leave Sunrise, Skyline, and Crayler open for school traffic when congestion is a problem. Extending Grandview is necessary for this same developer to build out the remainder of East Ridge. In addition, it promises to relieve school-related traffic in the East Ridge neighborhood. Concern for slowing the flow of traffic on Lakeview or a greater risk for accidents has not seemed to be an issue. Why is the additional interception on Jardoe such an issue? Without it, all traffic in and out of Skyline East will go directly through the school zone during peak traffic times from the schools. That is definitely a recipe for increased accidents. The risk of additional accidents on Jardoe would be minimal as the traffic is already slowed down to 20 miles per hour in the school zone during peak times. We should apply the same logic to both situations. Grandview should have been extended to Lakeview at the time of East Ridge was built. Residents have put up with years of frustration over traffic problem that should have never been there in the first place. We are asking for a direct exit to Jardoe and to change Moore and Payne Streets to pedestrian walkways in a good, vague effort to protect the safety of pedestrians and drivers in the school zone and to help preserve the quality of life for existing residents in the area. Please consider the long-term impact of decisions made today and seek a solution for the greater good of the whole Stillwater community. Now is the time to make sure that we are not faced with a bigger traffic and safety problem in the future and left with no way to fix it. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts.
Thank you. David Goud.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Goud. I live 1210 North Payne Street. I would like to thank you for taking the time this evening, and this meeting is very long, in the spirit of good nature. I'm not going to ask for additional time.
Thank you.
Also, I considered possibly bringing refreshments for you, but you only think I know how to make these brownies, and given the previous items on the agenda, I didn't think that was appropriate. I'd like to talk about a few things that I've already mentioned. I'm going to try not to reiterate, and try to provide additional information, and in the spirit of engineering and science, I'd like to provide some numbers as well. First, the conversation about the Grandview extension and impact would benefit the area. I would like to point out that Grandview is going to allow traffic to flow better into the arterial, but it will do nothing for the focus area around the junior high and Skyline Elementary that we're concerned about. That's our point. We are concerned about the safety of the students, and even the residents are on it. I'd also like to point out that Leslie just spoke about the access to Jardoe that we'd like to see. I'd like to point out that that access point, what we envision as an access point beyond where there are established houses on those lots, would actually enter Jardoe outside of the school zone, which is important. So that would never allow an entrance, a degress point outside of the school zone. As it's currently platted, all access points are within school zones. So I'd like to call your attention to the first, first sheet here that has street measurements. My wife and I spent a nice Sunday evening and went out and measured all the streets in the neighborhood area, and there's a map on the following page that indicates where those measurements were taken, random places on these streets. I'd like to point out that I gave you the street width as a rounded measurement, but I also gave you the raw measurements so you know that there's no misunderstanding, no rounding errors. Average street width in the area is 25.2 feet. The width of Sunrise is 20 feet, one inch, so 20.1 feet. Fully 20% or 5.1 feet narrower than the surrounding streets, just as a point of consideration. Above that, there's, we actually had the opportunity to find the school bus and measure. The measured width of the school bus is 9.3 feet. When you consider the width of two school buses that would be crossing paths on Sunrise Avenue, we're looking at a combined width of about 18.6 feet. When you subtract that from the 20.1-foot street width, left with about one and a half feet, allowing six inches on either side for the bus to travel, that will allow six inches between the buses to pass. I'd like to use my multimedia presentation skills to demonstrate, this is six inches. This is what's, what would be allowed between buses as they pass. It's certainly close enough for the bus drivers to give each other a high five as they go by, but it's not a safe distance to keep between buses. As a result, the streets- As a result, the street, if you look at the photos that I provided, the street situation has deteriorated around Sunrise. Simon showed pictures of vehicles actually going off of the road. I'll call your attention to these very quickly and we'll run through these. The first photo, Photo A, just demonstrates the general street width. That's taken from the inside of my small Honda SUV. And B actually shows a pickup truck just driving down that street, very narrow. And I didn't see, if you look closely, you'll see this is at the intersection of Skyline and Sunrise, looking east. When the road was constructed or reconstructed, it was constructed much narrower than it was originally made. You can actually see the taper of the road from the corner into the existing road bed. The lateral tapers in. And also the collection of water and ruts that have been generated as a result of this narrow street. Had the street been made wider width, it would be perfect for the neighborhood than these situations have occurred. The code, as I understand it, for minimum street width in Stillwater is 20 feet or four inches. Photo D actually shows the bar ditch, which is more of a depression, and also the ruts that run in the perimeter of Sunrise. And the last, Photo E shows the drainage across the street. And Photo F shows that there's actually probably more water being carried in the ruts than there is in the bar ditches. Finally, the last thing I'd like to say is the potential issues with additional traffic on Sunrise, the street's too narrow as it is, difficult handle traffic. I did a traffic count, my own personal traffic count. They mentioned almost 300 cars. I need to point out that 270 cars were caving in 90 minutes, and that included 19 buses. So I think there's a significant traffic impact. And if I did mention, you'll have, one of your alternatives to not it is to find that the preliminary plan is not an appropriate use of the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the city council approve the preliminary plan. And I'd like you to consider that.
Thank you. Matthew Wyckoff.
Okay, so what I prepared a little thing here so this can be easier. And I made it a little bit easier. It has an outline on the front. And I'm going to skim through this as much as possible because I know the problem is in the road and I'm going to read it out. There's been a lot of talk about artery street intersections. And I understand that what we're looking at here is that the data shows that if you have an intersection into an artery street, you're going to have more accidents at that intersection. However, that doesn't seem to touch what would happen to an accident within the non-artery street, the residential street. Yes, the speed limit is lower, but you're going to be putting a lot more possibility of having an accident with kids and pedestrians that went on an artery of the street. So I think that's one point that needs to be covered. Also, like with Duke and the Renaissance, it doesn't seem to have a problem having access points to an artery street when the developer wants it. I mean, the Renaissance is a apartment complex, and it has two access points to Jardo in less than a block. So Grand View is another one of those, as long as the developer seems to want it, it seems to be okay. We don't build streets for normal traffic. We build them to handle peak traffic, as can be exhibited by, as I said earlier, with the game day traffic. Not only was Perkins and Sixth altered, Western and Sixth were altered, and the off-ramps and off-ramps to I-35 and 51 were altered for that traffic seven days a year. So I think that's a big thing there. Class C traffic. It was brought up that our area has class C traffic. And if you go back and re-watch the presentation on that day, I believe within five minutes, it was said that class C is the worst possible rating that it could have anyway. So yes, for 150,000 more cars, they're not going to have any worse rating, but it's still going to be an impact to that area. The 100-year flood zone, a five-foot ditch that we want, that they want put in north of, or south on, south on the property, that 100-year flood is based on what happens, you know, supposedly in a hundred years. I think it was also brought up, and we had three of those events last spring, a year ago. So it's very possible, especially with the wet weather that we've had, that that could happen again. Since the utilities run right next to that easement, to where that ditch is going, and a five-foot ditch, if you don't have specialized equipment, mowing that is going to be very difficult. If you look at the corner of Jardo and Lakeview, on the east-southeast corner, you'll see what I'm talking about. If I buy, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. If you look at the ditch that is just north of McElroy, on the east side of the road where the pasture is, they have chosen to use weed killer and pesticides to keep the down because they can't mow it. This would degrade the ditch. Then where would that water go? Right into the utilities that are in the ground on the south side of the proposed School zones versus other areas. Yes, the local statutes list or local say two exits for this type of development. I don't believe that that was really kept into consideration when going to the school zones. I mean, if you look at the previous presentation that's day for 32nd and Western, the two exits were both on two arterial streets, 32nd and Western. It wasn't to a school zone. Understandable, this is what we're talking about. And we're in discussion about the developer saying how well he builds and how well he puts his stamp on everything. As a developer, is not liable for anything that happens on my property. So no matter what he does in his, he's only liable for a limited amount of time for the homeowner that he sells to, but nothing to any of the surrounding area, nothing to the school zone, nothing. So I don't really see his, how nice a house he builds, if he's worsening the neighborhood, it's regardless of how nice the houses are, it's still going to impact the rest of us. If he really cared about putting a stamp on it, the addition name would not be Skyline East, it would be Jimbo's addition. But that's just what I have to say. The other thing I have to say, there's been stolen tactics here by the developer and his associates, such as not giving you the traffic assessment till the day of. I mean, that's just one thing. The 300-foot radius, we all know that the school zone is handled by more than just, or viewed by more than just people within 300 feet of the school zone. That notification should have been sent out to every parent of every student that goes to that school zone. And I know that it's not required, but these are the things that we're looking at is that it seems like this developer is doing the bare minimum to try and get this room, get it passed, and get going on it, not looking at the whole picture. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Tom Bradley.
I'm Tom Bradley. I live at 1107 North Paine Street. And as I did last time, want to remind somebody about the driver, the track team, that who now had a third death from that accident in the war. So our track team that also runs along the sidewalks, which was a track, so people were on the sidewalk. But I was doing some calculating a minute ago. He said that this is the 27-acre easement lot that's going to have a 4.7 to 4.9 houses per acre. Where's the roads? How much acreage is lost due to roads and in the acreage? I presume that nobody has actually figured that out and said, hey, we're actually losing three or four acres to roads, so therefore, we're putting more houses per acre than what is actually allowed. And the safety of our kids is the most, because our neighborhoods, like my street, has no sidewalk, ladies walking, babies in carriages, kids walking to school up and down Linda and Payne, and Sun One, Skyline, and Sunrise don't have very limited sidewalks. We have none on Linda and Payne at all. There's only one on Sunrise, there's only one on Skyline. And so that's very limited, so that's a safety risk also for this increased traffic. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Is there anybody else signed up?
There is nobody else signed up. That's why, yes. So if you can give your name and address again, I appreciate it.
Kathy Houston, 1107 North Skyline. I appreciate you letting me speak because some things have come up as I've been listening. I've lived in this neighborhood, northeast part of town, for 40 years at three different locations, and I think that gets, a lot of people have lived in this neighborhood for a very long time. But these three different locations have given me a unique perspective, I think, too. One thing, the access management that they talked about is the reason that they didn't look at other streets, smaller streets into the neighborhood. I can tell you the five, I listened to the last meeting pretty carefully, the replays of it, and the places that they listed, that they put their counters for the traffic are places that even though I live on Skyline now, I tend to avoid those intersections. And when I lived on Sunny Brook for 11 years, I lived there from 1983 to 1994, and I've lived on Skyline from 1994 to the present. And before that, we lived on North Perkins Road from 1980 to 83 in an apartment, one of those huge apartment complexes. And, you know, I practically always avoid these big intersections getting to work. I used to cut through from North Perkins Road, I taught at Yale, Yale High School, and I would go through on Red Bud and then hit Manning and then go out on McElroy and then turn up Speller. None of these intersections would have caught me. And I still tend to take those kinds of streets through our neighborhood to get in and out, and none of these counters can catch me. I mean, I'm not trying to not be caught by, well, obviously, but, you know, it's just, I don't, I don't trust the traffic study. That's all I'm saying. I think there's a lot more traffic coming in from all over town, from these other avenues that weren't, weren't taken into account. The other thing is us talking to city staff, I thought that during Aspen Heights, it was plenty, I mean, we've been here for other, other issues, and this particular problem with traffic is pretty well-known to the city, I would think, that maybe we need to do a better job of communicating that again. And what also bothers me is the idea that it is the responsibility of the school to fix this so that the developer can develop this in the way that would be most cost-effective to the people involved to build these homes. If they can't be built safely, then I think this is just not, and he can't build them cost-effectively in this location, then this is not the right location if we can't put streets through as has been suggested to Jardo. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak on this item?
I'm Mark Roy, 1319 London. I signed up on a roster and I hope I didn't sign the volunteer to work for the city council. But anyway, I just want to congratulate and compliment whatever presentations has been made on this issue tonight. I think that many of the people have done a housewarming job for the city to research this, and I hope that the commission requires that developers do some of this detailed research. And that's why I want to compliment those people. And I want to repeat, and I was going to say something about some of the issues, another thing I want to say is that knowing these problems, and I've been here for every meeting, I'm a senior citizen of the public of our area, and I've seen that area grow. And when they put school in, I kind of wondered. I said, well, that's a good location because it's an open area, they can expand and they can control that traffic and building additions to the area, which will not cause taxpayers a business problem after somebody just does the research and you cause big problems. So I'm going to end with that, except to say this. Any development in this area has almost got to have an access to Jardo. I've lived there all after, where they told us in one occasion that they've got four lane Jardo, all the way up through where we live. It hasn't happened, and it may happen later on, but it's going to cost more money to do all this. And here we are considering a problem that's already, I mean, an addition that's already a problem. So whatever is approved needs to have some kind of entry or exit to Jardo in this area next to our schools and the neighborhood that has already been developed. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate how talented you are to endorse what has been said before.
Thank you. Anybody else that'd like to speak? In the third row back there.
My name is Mary McFarlane, and I live at 1917 North Skyline Street. That is the next of the last house on Skyline, so you can see I'm right in the trenches of when they do the queue. I make it a habit, I never leave my house between 3:00 and 4:30 in the afternoon, simply because I cannot get out most of the time. And I do not want to meet a bus coming down between Skyline, between cars parked on each side of the street. So I don't want to be the dead horse because everybody's done a wonderful job of presenting and their plans. I want to say thank you to everybody who's participated in a wonderful democratic example of our, how we work. But something that has not been mentioned, and maybe hasn't, isn't even a concern, but I personally would be concerned to move into this new neighborhood if I had to have emergency vehicles come down into that area. If I have a heart attack or a home invasion or a choking child, I don't particularly want my emergency vehicles taking the scenic route, which is all you're going to have if you don't have access to that arterial road in Jardo, because you just cannot get an emergency vehicle down in there quickly in the, in most cases. And it's been more than once that I've seen a police car come flying down Skyline and almost missed that turn on the Craylar. Ambulances too. So even though it's not one that most people, that most of the time they'll come down, there is that aspect of, somebody needs to study what it would take to get emergency vehicles down into that neighborhood and out again. And again, the queue time for the schools, 15 or 20 minutes, yeah, that's probably from when they get on the school property to when they pick up the child and leave school property. That doesn't take into consideration that the hour, hour and a half, that parents are sitting there on both sides of the street and they're barely one lane. barely one lane to go down through there. Like I say, from three to four thirty, it's almost impossible for any traffic to go down through there past the junior high. And that's not even counting the kids that are going everywhere to grade and playing in the park and doing whatever they, they're doing. So I really would encourage the developer to look really hard at putting that access to Jardine in, because I personally would love to see a new neighborhood down in there. And thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. I know it's, we're all getting wiggly, and I promise it'll be very short. Two things. I'm Valerie Gisling, nineteen oh three North Skyline, just a couple houses down from her. I do not begrudge the developer making money on this neighborhood. This is how they make their living, build these things. I would just ask that they, this is a community, and they put a little more of the human feeling into it, more than how much money they can make out of it. And also, I think the density laws, they have followed the letter of the law, but I don't think that was the intent of the law. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Stephanie Bundy, nine oh one East Dell Avenue. I'm right at the corner of Dell and Benjamin. So just wanted to give my personal testimony. Three years ago, I got married and moved in with my husband, Ted, Ted, Ted. No, he'll remember now. Just as an FYI, I'm assuming that choice of moving in with him now, simply because of the major traffic that we constantly endure on Dell slash Benjamin. So much so that my neighbor, as his solution to the problem was to just gun it in reverse, they'll have to stop. I don't want to live in Mad Max beyond Thunderdome or anything like that. I chose to live here because I thought that it was peaceful, and I'm living in a time now where I actually have to change the time that I teach in order to work around the schedule of the massive traffic on our street. So please help us with that, because I want to teach morning classes again. That'd be really nice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak?
Are followers allowed? I'll be brief. Ninety seconds. That's okay.
Yes.
All right.
Behind you.
Hello. My name is Austin Tiers. I'm living fifteen oh one East Nellon Drive. First of all, I want to thank the city of Stillwater and the city council for a great job on the environment. In Stillwater, I think everyone takes pride on the environment. One thing, I don't know if we have been in consideration, all those houses, I've got to take a lot of grass, trees out of the environment. And something that we need to look at, how many, how many trees per acre are the, the developer planning on planting per, they'll do all these stuff that they're removing. Kind of, I haven't heard anybody say that, anything out of the environment yet. So maybe we need to look closer into the things happening around us and consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else who'd like to speak? I am the person.
Can you answer that question about the trees? Are they in the plans?
As I understand, our requirements are, there are no tree plantings for a residential area. And the developer, when they develop the property, can take whatever trees they want to out of the property, and they do not have to plant trees back. That's according to our code, and we could do in terms of this commission, but I'm denying about that side.
So to clarify, landscaping requirements do not exist for single and residential structures in the, under the development code.
We have a person that spoke before that wants to speak again. Lady. Is there a lady behind that? Oh!
I'd like to make one comment.
Why don't you come up to the microphone with your name and address and...
Okay, I want to make one comment. I moved into this neighborhood fifteen nineteen East Nellon Drive, fifty years ago. There was a requirement in Stillwater, every building, every house had to have one tree. There was no building anything without one tree, and that should be the way it's done today.
Thank you for coming. Are there objections to him coming up again and speaking?
I'll be brief.
Just to reiterate things that have already been said.
Yes, sir. Come over here.
I'll try to make it quick. My name's Aaron Underwood. I live at nineteen twenty North Grandview Street. When I heard very briefly that there was a development, I thought, wow, that's good, that we're getting our sidewalks done, we're widening our streets. But I couldn't believe that we're building new houses when we've got kind of our own problems still to deal with. So I just think that it's important that we think about maybe developing and finishing what we started here around the school and around the areas before. We really move into building more stuff, because we're just going to have more problems that we haven't fixed before. Anybody that's ever walked with a stroller on Grandview Street knows that you have to walk in the street, because the driveways are bumpy, and it's just not working, the sidewalks don't work. And so we're just going to have more problems. So that's, that's my, my bit on the Grandview side of things.
You still want to speak again?
I'll be brief.
Without objection, you can speak for maximum nine seconds.
All right. Thank you. I, just a couple things. In our meeting with city staff, those of us from the neighborhood, it was implied that we were speaking on emotion, not fact. And I hope we've demonstrated tonight that our concerns are rooted in fact. Yes, we're emotional because we live here, but we have facts and evidence to support what we're saying. I also understand that developer has sunk a lot of money into this, and I don't wish him to lose any money, but I would, I hope that the decision that's made tonight is not based on whatever money that the developer has spent so far, but based on what's right for the neighborhood. And I, I want to reiterate that Grandview will not solve anything in the long run that will really move the problem sideways in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have another person that, did you raise your hand?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
I'm Steve Franklin, fourteen twenty-four on North Skyline. The truth is, is the majority of the neighborhood is here because we already have a congestion issue. And to add more to that, we'd actually just probably break camel. And so it just, I think the majority of people are here is because of that. And so I just wanted to reiterate that, too.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? See no one. I'll close the public hearing. Before Mr. Ghost goes up, and I'll have to say what he wants to, I have a question for the staff and/or legal. Can we legally require the developer to have a connection to Jardine, realizing that they have provided two or more connections?
The short answer is no, you cannot. If you were to approve with the condition that they have the access to Jardine, you would need to give them an opportunity to negotiate that, and then a caveat for how to proceed forward if they cannot give that access.
Finally.
Yes, you may.
So if the board decides to conditionally approve the plot, reasons must be given, and those reasons must refer specifically to parts of the comprehensive plan or city regulations in which the plot does not conform to.
So I'll give my particular case in terms of, I want the developer to eliminate the connection and more evidence. So they still have two connections, and it's contingent on the Grandview connection, then my understanding that's in compliance with the city codes and regulations and master plan, and therefore legally, I cannot require a connection to Jardine. Is that a correct statement?
I think I'm the logic you're saying. As long as there are the two access points, then, and they are in compliance with the comprehensive plan and city regulations, then now you cannot have an additional requirement of Jardine.
Peyton Street. There's been discussions about Sunrise Avenue that all being twenty-foot wide. It is a city street, a city roadway, that the city rebuilt the street twenty-foot wide. Can we require the developer to widen that street since it's on city roadway and the city-built street?
You can make the request as a condition. In terms of, and we had this discussion with, for example, Silberton, about trying to ask them to widen. The developer had discussions with city staff. City engineering was not willing in that case to cost share on paying. The developer later came back as a gesture of goodwill and offered to improve that to city, widen it to city standards as a conciliatory measure for trying to help deal with potential traffic issues. If you remember, there was primarily one access and a secondary emergency access. In this case, you have two, three proposed access points within code. So you can make the request. It would be something that, as a condition, we would have to work through. I would also add that if you provide conditional approval, the process going forward would be, they would submit revised plan, a revised plan to the city, we would review it, and then it would come back to you for approval.
A revised plan, right, please?
Revised preliminary plan would come back to you for approval before any final plan would be submitted. And that is per code.
I concur with that.
Does anyone on the commission want to ask the staff or legal any questions at this time?
If we do that, if you do, if you did something like that, there's sixty days that if, that it's automatic, if it gets certain, passed a certain amount of time, does this conditional aspect, does that, does that increase the timing on that?
Right. The sixty-day rule would not apply if you approved the plot conditionally.
Mr. Ghost, do you want to say anything at this particular time? While you're coming in thinking of what you might want to say, you may have caught one item that I brought up that I want to see if you're objecting to, and that is, I'd like to eliminate the connection to more. I believe that's right in the middle of the highest area of the school. It leaves you with two other access, which one of them goes through the Grandview connection. Do you have objections?
I've talked to our client, and they have no objection to taking more out. We've talked to Esther about it as well, as far as how would that impact access to the site? And she doesn't feel there'd be a negative aspect to that. So our client is okay with removing more and making it a pedestrian access. I just, I got, I got a question for legal on the balance of the conditional approval. Does it come back to here? Because what I heard on the previous preliminary plat had conditions that that's not coming back, that as long as those conditions are met, that the improvement of plans and final plat can proceed?
And the owner provides that conditionally approved plats shall be required to be submitted back to the planning commission for their review before the final can be approved.
So Mr. Ghost, I'll give my non-legal opinion, and then the attorney can tell me whether I'm doing the process correctly. So if we go forward this and we eliminate the connection to more, that would be a condition that you'd have to redo the preliminary plat and bring it back here. But I was talking about earlier, the Grandview connection, and putting it on notice. So you see in the public meeting that it'll be finished before the final plat. If it's finished before the final plat, then I'll remember that and vote for the final plat. If it's, if it is not done before the final plat, I'm not making a condition, but I'm telling you right now, I would not vote for the final plat unless that was true.
And I guess point of clarification on that, this is going to be platted in two phases. Phase one will be half of it, phase two will be half of it. I'd like to make that contention upon approval of the second final plat, which is when the traffic is at the hundred and thirty blocks, not sixty-five.
So the sixty-five block goes up to Brook Avenue, so you would build Brook Avenue.
Now, if we take more out, we would build the West Road up to Cradler as part of phase one, so that the access to Cradler, the access to Payne would be constructed as part of phase one.
So when you say half, which half is it? The south half, or the north half, or the east half, or the west half?
The south path is phase one. And in this case, block two, we'll just do blocks, block one, block two, block four, five, and block three blocks, one through ten. There's a, there's a phase line on that.
And, and that, to me, is the south half. To have your second connection, you'd just be building a road up there to Camden.
To Cradler.
So, Cradler.
So, yeah. Block six, seven, eight, and the north half of block three would be phase two.
And before you do the final plat for phase two, then you have Grandview connection.
I, I suspect it'll be done sooner. I'm just...
Oh, I don't like that word, sooner. You expect it to be done earlier.
Earlier.
Paul Stacey does not like that word, sooner than sound. So, so it's earlier.
Earlier.
Okay. I fully understand that. Do you wish to say anything else to this commission at this time?
I think the rest of the items that came up during the public hearing, we've addressed some of those previously. As far as staging for the schools, this neighborhood's going to provide an additional parking lot for the schools during pickup. So hopefully, that would alleviate some of the concerns. A road to Jardine would provide another pass-through to the junior high, which could create some, some safety issues within the neighborhood. Level C service is not the worst service. Level service F is in traffic studies. And we can bring Esther back up if there's some more questions about the traffic study.
It's like you're grading ABC, D, and F.
Right, right. The, the density, that came up again. There's six acres in roads, two acres in detention ponds. Those acreages were considered in the gross density, gross density, total area, total number of lots. So that's covered out.
Any questions? So you know questions from the commission and staff, come up and give their alternatives.
So, based on everything said, the staff has the following findings. One, the preliminary plat is proposed currently meets all the zoning and subdivision requirements for the zoning district. It has two access.
That meets all the requirements?
That meets...
Go ahead.
That meets the RSS zoning requirements in terms of density, layout, et cetera. It meets the subdivision requirements for at least two access points, because it's over thirty lots. The comprehensive plan recommends low density residential. There's residential and ag in this area right now. There's residential and ag in this area right now as far as existing land use. As I just said, the proposed density is in line with the RSS zoning district. In spite of the issues brought to the table, and staff is happy to hear them, we feel that it is in accordance with the comprehensive plan with regard to the way future land use element. Because as stated, as one person already stated, low-density residential covers up to 21 units maker. With that said, in terms of alternatives, one, you can accept the findings as presented and recommend approval, or approve as presented. You can find where request is not appropriate and recommend denial. You can provide, and you can accept the findings with conditions, and give conditional approval with the stipulations noted on the record, knowing that that conditional approval means it would come back to you for review again. Do you feel additional items are needed for discussion or information? You can table the item to a certain date later. Any questions staff can answer?
Sunrise and, according to the major street and highway plan, that's a collector street?
It is, in spite of the collector, yes. Both in the transportation plan and the comprehensive plan.
What is the section for collector street?
It is wider than 20 feet, 1 inch by far.
Somewhere in the neighborhood, 36 inches, 36 feet. You draw it out there?
As far as street width, yes. And for the record, the collector is designed to handle ring traffic from multiple local streets together to funnel that to a larger arterial street. Any questions staff can answer?
Any other questions from the staff, legally related?
Did he just state that Sunrise is construed to be a collector?
Sunrise, in terms of our major street and highway plan, right, in the future should be a collector street, it's a fine collector street. It's only 20-foot wide, it should be somewhere in the future. If the city ever gets money, widen to 36-foot wide.
So as the chair mentioned earlier, when it was rebuilt, it was rebuilt to that 20 feet, 1 inch width for multiple reasons at the time. As the community grows, that street width should change to that 36 feet in order to accommodate additional traffic.
And Jardoe, hopefully, will be enlarged to a 4 or 5-lane street someday in the future as development curves in this area. When? We have no idea.
Those, those would be issues that, with additional input from residents, as well as the community as a whole, the city could have their guidance on with regard to the comp plan, transportation element, and CIP.
Any other questions of the staff or legal? Commission discussion?
I have two things I wanted to bring up. I mean, one, certainly we all know that the city of Stillwater has many areas where our roads are adequate to the development or none. We have sewer with water pressure issues. These have all come before us over time. Certainly, we know that, and that that's going on. But we also know that none of those things are going to happen. We don't have people here in Stillwater. We're not going to fix any of our problems. So we're sort of caught in this quadrant between the two. So that's just, I just want everyone to know that we certainly know that there are places, we've talked about this and a number of things just in the last few months. The second thing, there was a comment that said that infill development must be compatible with the existing area. I think we, in the last, just in the last few months, have had some situations where we've made decisions about infill that doesn't necessarily fit with the existing area for many reasons and many types of things. And I think that, while we certainly want to be cognizant of the existing areas, we also have to make the decision the best we can for the city and for the citizens thereof. So I think in our regard, you know, we have a tension here. Clearly, in the local, this local area, they are affected and impacted into the plan. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to deny that. So we have to make a decision from my perspective, what's best for the city and the growth, future growth of the city going forward. And so while I'm, I'm, I understand their concerns, I also feel like developing this part of Stillwater is important and has been an important part of the growth of Stillwater. And I can't fix all the problems that have gone on there, but what I do know is, we get people doing things in there, and we might do something about it.
The other commissioner wants to say anything at this particular time?
Well, I have an issue with that traffic study, which I think is fundamentally flawed. I still don't understand why the count isn't done on the interior streets, which is where the true impact is going to be felt. So I, I can't ascribe a lot of validity to that traffic study. I can understand the argument that we need development, and we do. Stillwater needs housing. I just still have a lot of difficulty saying that development or growth should take total precedence over established neighborhoods. There should be balance there. I would like to see in development where, almost like a doctor, do no harm. I'm concerned, and in this instance, there will be. I just think there's a real concern with emergency vehicle access into this area with the school, the junior high, and elementary and adding the 132 lots without a E-RIS out to Jardoe. I think that's a major safety issue. I just, and the discussion related to the school district will need to figure out how to accommodate this additional traffic. Again, there's a, this is another thing I have an issue with. So, and there's a comment made, yes, we have, the body has approved infill development that was not necessarily compatible with the existing built environment. Well, I disagree with that. So I'm bearing off on tangents, but I think the essence is, this traffic issue, this street infrastructure issue is a major issue, and I cannot support this development unless there is a more reasonable resolution to this traffic and this street issue. I would like to see the developer and the neighborhood, the city, come up with a reasonable compromise to address this. I just don't think that the neighborhood should have to bear the brunt of this, the negative impact of this development.
Any other comment at this particular time? I'll, I'll make a few statements here. Statement number one is, this development is accordance in density with our codes and regulations. And even though some of this round area has less of a density, I believe in a city that this is an appropriate development in this particular area, and I have no problem with the density. I'd love to have a connection with Jardoe. I talked to Mike Karns about this, and he's concerned if they have a connection with Jardoe, that this will be a cut-through area for the school situation and a future safety concern on Jardoe 10, 15 years from now in our future development. What I'm hearing from legal and the staff is because they have two other, or three other connections, and I'd like to eliminate the connection to Moore Avenue and make it pedestrian-only, so that it has two connections that we're not in good legal standing to have a connection to Jardoe. With the connection on, through Grandview, I believe that this development is acceptable, and I would vote for this development as long as that connection with Grandview is made before phase two is built. Anybody else would like to say anything? Do, do I hear a motion? Why don't you speak in the microphone? Was this public meetings?
No, I'm sorry. No, I was saying, you were just, you had brought up the fact that you were applying, A, with the closing of Moore, and B, that the second, that Grandview is open before the completion of phase two.
Before the start of the phase two.
Before the start of the phase two. And then I would make the motion to accept the findings and prove the preliminary plan as presented with the, those two recommendations or those two conditions there are.
If I may, if a condition plat is motioned and seconded and passed, reasons must be provided for the conditions, and they have to refer specifically to the comp plan or city regulations as to what plat does not conform.
I want to eliminate Moore Avenue because it leaves two connections, and I believe that it is in the middle of a highly congested and morbid area of the school district, and the developer agrees to that reduction in connection and make it residential only. Do you need any more reasons to that?
Thank you.
Is there anybody that's going to second that? Not hearing a second, and a robust rule, the chairman can now second that motion. Is that correct?
I believe so.
I will second the motion. Call for the vote. The motion does not pass. There are two yes and two no's. Do you want more discussion, or does someone want to make another motion? Two commissioners that voted no. Would you vote for a motion that requires a connection to Jardoe? And then legal works through that issue?
I would be totally supportive of that. Would be supportive of that?
If you want to make a motion to that effect, I would still like to include eliminating the Moore connection, it's only pedestrian-only, and having Grandview completed before phase two starts.
I'd like to make the motion, but I want to have it phrased correctly, so...
Have as much time as you desire, or if you want to talk to legal, you can talk to legal in the microphones, everybody can hear you.
So how would such a motion be structured?
You can approve the plat conditionally upon an access on Jardoe. Make Moore a pedestrian-only access. Is it Grandview? Is that what it remains?
Grandview.
And also for Grandview to be completed prior to phase two.
Starting.
Starting. And reasons will need to be provided for all those conditions that relate to the comp plan and to the regulations.
And I would provide reasons for Moore and the Grandview connection. So the question is, what is the rationale to require the developer to connect to Jardoe that is in accordance with the comp plan?
I believe there was phrasing part of discussion earlier regarding the integrity of neighborhood, and I think that would be adequate justification governed by the comp plan.
Thank you.
She's ruling that you have justification. Whether it's legal just for it or not, she's not ruling the matter of fact. So, so that'll be entered in the minutes, and that will be our justification. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Need discussion before we vote? Let's vote. The motion passes 4 to 0. 3A, regular meeting ceremony on February 4, 2020 is the next agenda. I'm going to profile my agenda. We're discussing that, and I hear a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Item 4A, next planning commission meeting is March 3, 2020. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We stand adjourned, thank you.